We are ready to jump right into the agenda and 3.02 is honoring excellence.
Thank you, Mr. Rothman, and we definitely have excellence tonight as I invite to the podium, Ms. Colby Kelly from Liberty High School. Ms. Kelly here made Liberty High School history on October 26th down in Springfield at the Cooper Tennis Complex as she became the first female tennis player in Blue Jay history to win an individual state championship in the sport of tennis. Phenomenal career. There she is with her team picture there displayed for all. Read in reading an article that came out after she won her state championship said that it was her goal in eighth grade to win a state championship and she did just that talking to her parents and Coach Cook who's with us. Thanks for being here tonight before the meeting. She was the only player to win a state championship in Kansas City. So she represented Kansas City. The rest went to St. Louis and the only public school state champion this year in the state. So phenomenal career and she is off to the University of Nebraska Omaha to play for the Mavericks next year. So congratulations to her. You saw a few of the photos up there. I actually pulled one of my favorites off of Twitter. That was off of your Twitter page, wasn't it, Colby? Yes. Eating a little metal there. Tastes good, doesn't it? Absolutely. Well, congratulations. We have a certificate for you and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rothman as we have a tradition here in the boardroom.
We do have a tradition of honoring our state champions with a standing ovation. Congratulations.
Great job. Congratulations. Thanks for being here. Have several certificates that we wanted to hand out tonight. As many of you know, we had another successful diversity festival just about two weeks ago up at Liberty North. I could stand here and talk about the event as I was there and was helping out some of our video crews, but we actually produced the video from that night that we shared last week. Some of you may have seen this, but to me it's kind of one of those I could watch over and over and over again as it's definitely one of our showcase events. So Rob, if you could roll that for us.
What you're seeing here tonight is really a celebration of people being able to come together, to be able to coexist, to unite, to find out that we are really much more similar than we are different and to have an opportunity to become aware and explore different cultures than our own or what we're familiar with and to really embrace diversity.
A lot of times when I think about the Liberty community, we don't think about it as being terribly diverse. It feels a lot like a suburb of Kansas City and we're pretty homogeneous, but the reality is that we have a lot of diversity in our community.
To celebrate the uniqueness and the diversity in the community is probably one of the most important things you can do as a community. We celebrate our connections. We celebrate our networks. We celebrate our children and we celebrate the cultures that form the foundations of the families that they come from.
There's a lot of networking. There's a lot of, oh, I didn't know. There's a lot of walking away with a different perspective, appreciation for others, a deeper understanding about people's cultures, their experiences, and really how do we coexist in this world together to be able to have more empathy to each other and to be kind.
I love the entertainment. It is so much fun to have such a vast array of selections.
We have a children's corner that has various countries around the world and activities that are in those countries.
The artwork that's up and around, the booths are fantastic.
Our culinary arts class also makes different types of appetizers or little tidbits of treats that they are able to taste. Tonight we have 14 regions represented and so really just again, being able to celebrate and to coexist together tonight is just such a collaborative communal exercise.
It's a great event for our district to be doing. We're inviting in people in the school community, people outside of the community. So it's an opportunity for both of those groups to meet and mix.
Personally, it brings me a lot of joy and it brings me a lot of pride. We put a lot of work in this and our community embraces it.
It's just a lot of fun. It's just a lot of fun. There's smiles, there's handshakes, there's laughs, there's ahas, there's new connections, there's new friendships. It's almost like having Christmas in November.
And being able to again, to come together and find out that we're really more alike than we are different is really a beautiful thing to see, especially with the pulse in
For Dr. Adams for helping make that video and we thought we would reach out and invite some of those key players from that committee that may make that event go. See us tonight and us to present them with an award. So I know that they would say there's so many others, I'm sure, that were involved in this, but including the people that showed up for the booths, for those that attended. I mean, it was incredible. I think over 1,000 people attend that event every year and it just keeps getting better and better. So at this time, like I said, I think we have seven or eight certificates. I know there was at least one or two that couldn't be here tonight. I'm going to go ahead and read their names. Dr. Kirth, Dr. Adams, would you want to come up and present them with the awards as I read them? Josh Erhart, is Josh here? He's not. Okay, I'll just hand him off then. Jody Fowler, I know Jody is here. Doug Clark. We'll make sure you get that. Emily Presser. Jill Brock. Dana Combs. Melissa Taylor, and I know she has commitments tonight. And certainly last but not least, Trilliana McCollum. Let's give them a big round of applause. Again, thanks to all of them for their efforts. Hope everyone has a great upcoming holiday as that wraps up honoring excellence for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Dallas. If our honorees would stick around, we'll take a break here in a few minutes so the board can come out and individually meet and congratulate you. But first, we have a couple of other items of business. We've got 3.03 approval of agenda. Do we have a motion?
I move the board approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Discussion on the motion. Roll call, please.
David.
Yes.
Angie.
Yes.
Nick.
Yes.
Kim Marie.
Yes.
Andy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next comes public comments. We're going to take our break now. If anyone is here who wants to address the board, there should be blue cards on the table out there. If you want to complete one of those and give it to Dr. Tucker, myself, or another board member, we'll make sure that you have an opportunity to address the board when Is there anyone here who wanted to address the board and to get a chance?
All those people sitting in the back row though should move to the front.
Yes, you can fill in and just you don't have.
Oh. Do.
What?
You guys are good. It's so good to see you in the front.
All right. Brings us to our consent agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I move the board approve consent agenda items.
Roll call, please. That brings us all the way down to 5.01, reports from administration.
Yeah, first report is from academic services.
Yes, thank you so much. We wanted to share with you tonight, we're excited about our AP growth. Students have already signed up for the AP test in spring, kind of a change this year. And so we've seen just a trend of upward growth in our AP testing, which is good practice for kids regardless of where they're going and what they're doing. We're also, I wanted to just highlight our real-world learning on the board docs, but we've made just some amazing progress towards giving kids opportunities in the real world and what that looks like. The high school study team has been super instrumental in getting that part together with leadership of doing more. So we appreciate that a lot. A thank you to the innovation and learning coaches for all they do throughout our buildings. They move the spectrum for learning for all of us and I don't know that we really thank them as much as we need to based on what they do to help student success and teacher success, which is huge. And Dr. Westphal needs that care. We have three proposals for classes tonight that you'll see. One is advanced placement, human geography, that was brought forward through our Avid program, but obviously open to every student that we're excited about that. Another opportunity for advanced placement. Concert band proposal, which just shifts concert band just a little bit if students want to do that, it gives them a choice. And then music and film technology, and it's the course two. So if you remember, we added music and film technology course one last year. It's been highly successful. We're excited about that. And there's been some student voice to say they'd really like a second section of what that looks like. So you'll see those three on there. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer those for you. And finally, I wanted to give just a huge shout out to our buildings with the Veterans Day celebration and thank our veterans for all they do to support. They've supported us obviously through time and made such a huge difference in the lives that we lead today, but then our buildings also in the celebrations that they put forward to honor our veterans. So that's all from academic services.
Any questions of Dr. Heidi or her team? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Heidi. Next up is finance, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Tucker, and good evening. I just wanted to point out in my report that as we're moving into November and December, which are the times that we live off of reserves, that cash flows are great. You can see that in the chart that is provided in my report. So we're looking good as far as being operating solvent going into those months. Tax bills are being prepared by the county as we speak to be sent out. So we could see revenues start coming in as early as December for property taxes, but as you know, we'll see the high revenue come in in January and February. So we're good there. In the business office, we have our new accounts payable coordinator, Vicki Hegy, started on Monday. So we will be busy in the next couple of months training her. Very happy to have her. Excited that she's on board now and our new business operations specialist, Karen Foster, will start on December 2nd. She comes from a background of school business, so she should step right in and hit the ball, hit the ground running, just learning our systems, but has the knowledge that we need in that seat. So we're very excited about those two new employees that we have coming on board. Audit and finance committee did meet last night. Brian Echol from Westbrook and Company was there to present the audit to them. That went well. They had some questions and he was very generous in taking time to answer and go through all the financial statements with them. He will be here tonight to present that to you as well. Otherwise, we're reviewing budgets and getting ready to start the budget season for 2021. That's all I have for you tonight.
Just around the corner.
It is.
Any questions of Cindy? Okay. Thank you. Next up is human resources, Dr. Vogelar.
Thank you very much. We've uploaded a report with a lot of information there, but I want to draw and highlight just a couple items. First of all, our benefits enrollment wrapped up November 12th. That's a lot of work to enroll nearly 2,000 people in benefits for a year. It's a high consequence enrollment. So I want to thank publicly Kristel Morgan. She's our director of HR operations and led the charge. A lot of people were actively engaged in making that a possibility and the success really goes out to a lot of folks. Leadership Academy met again this past month. The focus of Leadership Academy with our up and coming teacher leaders was school law and special ed, special education in Liberty specifically. So our guest speakers were Tom Capps and also Dr. Chris Martin, our director of special ed. Next up in December is going to be an operations report. I think Mr. Anderson is going to be our future guest talking to them in December. We do that obviously all year long and the goal is to help take somebody who's getting a degree in administration and making it more specific to Liberty Public Schools and what leadership looks like in Liberty Public Schools. Final thing I want to talk about is with regard to Team Liberty. They spent a lot of time a couple of weeks back just diving into the academic calendar, chiseling away based on feedback that was collected from a lot of individual employees. They've crafted a schedule now, a calendar now that is, we're taking out to the neighboring districts, especially the Northland Capps and our Career Center partners to make sure that there's not conflicts there that will make it very difficult for students who participate in those programs to be engaged in our calendar as well. The goal is to get a final recommendation to Dr. Tucker and then to you December for a calendar hearing probably in January. So there's other things in the report. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer those questions, but that's human resources.
The only other thing I would add to what Vogelar said related to the academic calendar would be as you see that first draft in December and then we turn the year and end up with our calendar hearing in January, we are anticipating, because we're all kind of working at this together as collaborating districts, we're anticipating that you'll end up seeing some revisions after that first draft. And so just know that this is a very fluid conversation as it looks to setting next year's calendar with a lot of moving parts, but a lot of open conversations internally, but then also with our neighboring school districts related to shared or common programming that we have together. So more to come on that. We also met and spoke briefly yesterday with the team related to the Epic calendar and that was one of the questions around the statutory change that we had as to does that push their start, you know, up to that August 24th? And there's some work to be done with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in leveraging how we trap and account for summer school that would allow for Epic to actually stay on track with their early start and have that extended school year. So there are a couple of districts that are in that boat ourselves, as well as North Kansas City School District related to some of those special programs. So those conversations are ongoing as it relates to Epic. So I appreciate everyone that's been involved in that. Additional items, questions for Dr. Vogelar this evening?
A big thank you to your benefits enrollment people for, that was a lot of work to make all those telephone calls and I appreciated all three of mine. But since I'm sure I'm not the only one who took their time. That is a lot of keeping on track and being persistent and nicely done. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll pass that on. A lot of folks would really appreciate knowing that. So thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Vogelar. Next up is operations, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. There's two reports loaded up. One is operations generally and then also the construction update with a lot of detail. So certainly if there's any questions on those. Couple of items I'd like to highlight. First, you'll notice it's the annual report for health services just in terms of some of the end up seeing some revisions after that first draft. And so, just know that this is a very fluid conversation as it looks to setting next year's calendar with a lot of moving parts, but a lot of open conversations internally, but then also with our neighboring school districts related to shared or common programming that we have together. So, more to come on that. We also met and spoke briefly yesterday with the team related to the Epic calendar. And that was one of the questions around the statutory change that we had as to does that push their start, you know, up to that August 24th? And there's some work to be done with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in leveraging how we trap and account for summer school that would allow for Epic to actually stay on track with their early start and have that extended school year. So, there are a couple of districts that are in that boat ourselves, as well as North Kansas City School District related to some of those special programs. So, those conversations are ongoing as it relates to Epic. So, I appreciate everyone that's been involved in that. Additional items, questions for Dr. Vogelar this evening?
A big thank you to your benefits enrollment people for, that was a lot of work to make all those telephone calls, and I appreciated all three of mine. But, since I'm sure I'm not the only one who took their time.
Yeah.
That is a lot of keeping on track and being persistent, and nicely done. Thank you.
Yeah. I'll pass that on. A lot of folks would really appreciate knowing that. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Vogelar. Next up is Operations, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. There's two reports loaded up. One is operations generally, and then also the construction update with a lot of detail. So, certainly if there's any questions on those. Couple items I'd like to highlight. First, you'll notice it's the annual report for Health Services, just in terms of some of the more pressing health concerns that we see kind of in an aggregate way throughout all the buildings. And I think the most telling thing there is, we talked about this last couple of years as well, is it's just different than it has been in the past. And the types of concerns and the scale is just a little bit different. So, there's a lot of challenges that come with that. So, just want to bring that to your attention. Also, we do report out every month, you might notice, on our energy savings and some of the work that we're still reaping the benefit from the work we did with Synergistic several years ago. We also had some work that we did with Evergi to partake in a program that they rolled out this year that benefited to the district to the tune of about $32,000. So, that was a good partnership that we continue to grow. And also, just wanted to let you all know that we are working pretty earnestly on kind of the next round and phase of sustainability work that we'd like to undertake as a district. And so, we've been working pretty hard on a plan and partnerships. And so, probably in the next couple of months, we'll come in front of you with what that might look like and some options for us as a district to fund and then reap the benefits of those energy savings over time. So, that's an active project for us. Last, just a real quick update on construction. Nothing really has changed since the last report out. In terms of everything is on schedule in accordance with plan. So, that means Liberty North, that wing, will be open, and students will be in Liberty North's new wing at the start of next semester. The Liberty High PAC addition, that's still tracking well to be wrapped up through the summer and be ready for fall of '20. The Ox Gym Project over at Liberty High, we're still cleaning up some issues over there, but they are in the weight room and using it. They're also in the wrestling room. So, those projects took a while, but we're finally wrapping those up. And then last, the work here at the DAC. I'm told that they're actually going to put glass in place this week, and then into early December, they'll start wrapping everything up. So, by mid-December, we'll have that space back. So, that's good news. And that's all I have. Have you taken questions?
Questions for Mr. Anderson.
Someone stopped me last weekend and said, wow, they've been to Franklin, they had done a tour. They were so impressed by what that building looked like. And this woman has grandchildren there, and she's just like, it's amazing.
She said, joined us on our tour the week before school started.
The night before.
I did explain that to her, and she said, oh, my gosh, but it's beautiful. And she was just very complimentary.
It turned out great.
On that note, we have talked about a round tour, a round two tour for the board as we start getting closer and closer with particularly the two high school spaces. And so, we'll look on planning something in the near future in and around that. So...
So, we can see the faces now that they're cleaned up and...
Progress, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. In and around the superintendent's report, a couple of items to add, just for your awareness, in that as the board approved the strategic plan and graduate profile back in September, a lot of our day-to-day efforts and energies are around operationalizing that strategic plan and graduate profile, but then also connecting with a couple of differing groups, Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, and kind of the tie from that committee into the strategic plan and graduate profile. Our strategic leadership team, which represents those individuals that have responsibility over those plans. There's about a dozen of us or so. But then also, our district leadership team in utilizing the October time together, as well as our meeting in November, which was held last week, to solicit feedback and participation among those leaders within each of those 22 plans. So, we've done quite a bit over the course of the last two weeks with more, or two months with more to come. Fast forward to December, December 12th, 11th and 12th is a couple of key days for us in which we're bringing Scott Fuller back, our consultant, to kind of check in with us, but then also discuss and help facilitate conversations around some next steps. So, we're in the process of planning that agenda for his time with us. In addition, that evening of December 12th, we're setting the date for our Vision 2020 Committee Gathering for the Fall, for which we'll be able to roll out our strategic plan, graduate profile, as well as leverage that group for additional feedback in charting our next steps. So, save the date, December 12th at 5:30 PM. Earlier this week, yesterday, you might have seen an announcement from the Governor's Office in joint collaboration with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, along with a couple of other state agencies around a campaign entitled Clear the Air, which is a youth anti-vaping campaign, which we've been talking about for the last, really, several months, but then particularly as the start of this year began. So, that program is in process. They have a website. They have a couple of PSAs that are being developed. And the group was given 30 days to create a campaign, which is a pretty quick push. And so, more will be added to that toolkit for districts to utilize and to begin pushing out. So, we're glad to see that our state is taking a collective effort forward and really just unpacking those resources within that toolkit. So, more will come as we disseminate information to our teachers and our staff, families, parents, and students across our district and county. The only other item that I wanted to mention was in and around the legislative session that's just around the corner as we start the new year. As you know, pre-filing for spring legislation begins December 2nd, and so you will start seeing hundreds and hundreds of bills pre-filled. As we cull through that, we will look to see those that impact public education. We've had multiple conversations this fall with our legislators, in particular, Doug Ritchie, Lauren Arthur, as far as what they anticipate the spring session looking like, but then also partnering with them around our legislative priorities that we will finalize. So, you will see that as a board at our December study session, continue to provide input along the way. Fast forward to January as that's finalized and approved by the board, we will send a letter on behalf of the Board of Education accompanying those priorities to all of our legislators in Jefferson City that represent Liberty Public Schools. With that said, would offer up any opportunity for your questions.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. So, next we move on to unfinished business, 6.01, Board Policies.
Mr. Anderson alluded to Health Services in his report and some of the work that they've been involved in. We have two policies this evening that are presented to you for your consideration. We've spent additional time on these as relates to some questions that have come up as we've been looking through them. We provided with you or for you a Friday update, kind of spelling out some of those pieces, but wanted to turn it over to Steve to give a little bit of a recap before we recommend those two policies for your consideration.
Thank you. So, the first one is Policy JHC, and that's the one related to the School Health Advisory Committee. And there were some questions and concerns that were raised just prior to the last meeting of the board and in conversations with Kathy Aldemire, Director of Health Services. She had some concerns with that language as well. Worked real closely with MSBA. Their attorneys have talked through some of what our concerns were, and mainly it's, we already have these partnerships and collaborative relationships with other agencies. We have L-Chat, Laffy, there's a couple others, Clay County Health. And once she shared all that, the MSBA was like, well, you don't need this. We already have that, and it's more dynamic what we have. And so, we just struck that out, so we don't have to add that added committee. The other JHCD was really allowing parents an opt-out with some of the emergency medical and EpiPen or the Narcan that we are now allowed to administer as per policy. And again, in talking to MSBA and their legal counsel, they were very comfortable with us striking that opt-out because at the end of the day, if a student is in crisis, we're going to take care of that. And so...
Both of these were really made possible by that collaboration with attorneys at MSBA, and they were very comfortable. In fact, if anything, said, yes, you should do that. And so, with that, that language is reflected in both policy revisions. And...
Questions on those two specifically? You do have another set of eight that are presented to you this evening for first read that will be brought back to you in December for your consideration. We'll be diving into those as well administratively, but if you have questions, please let us know. Otherwise, would entertain a motion on JHC and JHCD.
I move the board approve policies JHC and JHCD.
Second?
Second.
Question, questions? Rule call, please.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moves us to new business, 7.01, Board Member Reimbursement Check. I think you should be present if you want to get a reimbursement check.
If you want to get paid.
I agree.
That's true. All right. The reason this was removed from the consent agenda is just our practice. Whenever we request reimbursement for expenses for travel to conferences and so forth, it allows the member requesting the reimbursement to abstain if they so choose. We're ready for a motion on this if someone wants to make that?
I move the board approve check number 696531 in the amount of $44.28 payable to Scott Connor for expense reimbursement.
Second?
Second.
Okay.
Discussion.
Okay.
Rule call.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moves us to 7.02, Contracts, Purchases, Bids.
We did have a couple of items underneath our emergency provision to conduct business that we wanted to make you aware of. So, Mr. Anderson?
Sure. Just real simple. We had some roofwork, emergency repairs at Donovan, and then we also had some American Disability Door changes at Epic we had to put in place in a hurry. And so, under the emergency provisions, we went ahead and acted on that. So, this is just kind of for after the fact approval.
I move the board approve emergency purchases from Weatherproofing Technologies Incorporated and DuraNautic Door Incorporated. Second. Questions or discussion? Rule call.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, 7.03, the 1819 Annual Audit.
Tremendous thanks to Cindy Sullivan and her team and the Business Services Department for their work in managing and navigating our annual audit. Again, this being in arrears for the 2018-19 school year. We've worked with Westbrook and Company for the last several years. As you'll recall, not too long ago, did a request for proposal and selected Westbrook and Company again to conduct our audit. I was a little worried that Brian would make it this evening because he had multiple board meetings in multiple districts, but the other district wasn't too far away. So, Brian just slid in, and we're going to welcome him to the podium to give us an overview of our annual audit prior to recommending the report to the board. Brian, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Brian Eckhoff. If you remember, last year Diana Klosterman was here to present the audit. We've made a transition in the audit team, kind of did a transition of the whole team. So, I'm actually leading your audit now. So, we like to switch up the audit team so you can have fresh eyes on your audit, look at new things, things like that. So, we're going to do a brief overview of the financial statements. If you have questions as we're going through it, don't hesitate to stop me, and we can actually answer those as we're going.
On the side?
Yeah, on the side.
There you go.
Okay. So, you'll see in the audit report on the top of page two, in the first paragraph, it'll give the opinion of the financial statements. So, you'll see that in your report, it says that the financial statements were presented fairly. So, this is a clean opinion or a good audit report. So, exactly what you want to see on your financial statements. The next several pages are the management discussion and analysis. You'll see comparative data there. However, we're going to skip over and then go straight into the financial statements. We'll stop on page 13. It is the Statement of Activities. It's kind of a different financial statement because it has your expenditures down the left-hand side, offset by various revenues through the middle of the screen to show the net cost of those functions. So, you can actually see how food service did this year, how your community services did this year. So, the net cost at the bottom right-hand corner shows about $150 million. Those expenditures are covered by your general revenues, which would be your basic formula, your sales tax, your property taxes, things like that. Page 14 is the balance sheet. You can see the district had right around $101 million as of June 30th. That is split between the three funds. The general fund was right around $40 million. Debt service fund was a little over $10 million, and the capital projects fund was about $51.5 million. Those fund balances are then split between four different types, and there is a footnote back on page 28 that actually tells you what those fund balances are. You have non-spendable scholarship funds in your general fund of $55,000. You also have $829 worth of interest that you've earned on those scholarships that haven't been dispersed out yet. That's the 829 that is restricted. Those will be paid out on future scholarships. And then in the assigned balance under the general fund, your student activities, those are your clubs, organizations. Athletics has 1.2 million. Food service, DESI requires you to carry your food service balance if it is positive. So, the food service must be spent on food service expenditures in the future. That balance is 1.6 million. And then you also received a children's service grant last year, and we hadn't dispersed all of those funds out. So, we had around $858,000 that was still left to be dispersed. So, those are assigned to be spent on those specific expenditures allowed by the children's services grant. The remaining balance of the general fund is unassigned because that's used for day-to-day operations of the districts, of the district. That's around $36 million. Your debt service fund is always restricted for debt service. So, you'll see that right there, the 10.3 million. And then your capital projects is split between restricted, which is your unspent bond proceeds of around $40 million, and then your capital projects of 11.7 million. They make up the total of $51 million. Page 15 is the Statement of Revenues, Expenditures, and Change to Fund Balance. You'll see the red box, the current year change in fund balance was a decrease of $646,000. However, if you look across the funds, highlight the capital projects fund, it actually had a decrease of 7.3 million. So, we actually had a significant amount of facility acquisition and construction, so that explains the decrease in the fund balance. And you can see you made a transfer from the general fund over to the capital projects fund of around $5.6 million to help pay for those capital projects. So, overall, all funds, $646,000 decrease in the fund balance this year. Page 23 in the footnotes shows your current debt. GAZB 88 actually changed the requirements of this footnote. It's more consolidated this year than it used to be. You can see the district has right around $173 million worth of debt. In the current year, you will pay off $11.8 million of that. This slide shows all of the bond payments through 2038 that you'll be making on the current debt, not figuring in any possible refundings. And then this is the future debt payments for your lease participation certificates. So, no balloon payments or anything like that, just your standard annual payments on all of your debt. Page 26 has the tax abatement and incentives. Currently, you have Chapter 100 abatements, Chapter 353 abatements. That's the first paragraph. Those are City of Liberty, and they're made up of a total of $4.4 million that decreased your property tax revenues. However, you received in lieu of payments of $481,000 from the City of Liberty on those revenues. And then the second one is the Tax Incremental Financing Commission, and it's made up of the City of Kansas City, or City of Liberty and City of Kansas City. And the total there was 7.168 million from the City of Kansas City and 1.7 million for the City of Liberty. The 7.168 million, you actually receive a tax in lieu of payment for that. So, the decrease in the property tax revenues there is actually the 1.7 million.
So, those are independent of each other, the abatements plus the TIF? Okay.
Yeah, three different, 100, 353, and Tax Incremental Financing.
And those are the actual tax values, not the assessed valuation, or...
That is the actual dollar amount of tax revenue for the district.
So, if those are paid or not paid?
Yeah. So, if those abatements didn't exist, we would have gotten 4.4.
Correct.
In that top.
Yes.
Got it?
Yes.
Yep.
And that's been a requirement within the audit since 2014, 2015?
Three or four years.
That's when the 77 rule came into play?
Yeah. This is a comparison of your revenues for five years. You can see that revenues this year are up about 6.5 million. As your average daily attendance continues to increase, your state funding continues to increase. So, that's the increase there, as well as an increase in your assessed valuation. So, overall, percentage-wise, still allocated the same across the local, county, and state amounts, just increasing as we increase our number of students. This is the same exact schedule but for expenditures. And you can see that overall, your expenditures this year were $172 million, down from $218. However, that decrease can be explained because last year you had a significant principal payment. So, really, that decrease is all of the principal. If you look at the principal line, last year you guys paid off almost $67 million worth of principal. This year, you paid off $11 million. This year you paid off 11 million. Overall, expenditures remain pretty consistent. The salaries and benefits this year were at 77 percent. That's consistent with most of my other districts as well. Five-year comparison for your reserve ratio and average daily attendance. This year, your reserve ratio came in at 28.38. We would consider this a healthy, financially stable school district. And then your average daily attendance was 12,174.46. I mean, as you can see on the screen, the last five years, your average daily attendance has continued to slowly increase every year. While we're here, we also look at state statutes and anything that you report to the state of Missouri through DESI. If we come across anything, we report it to you in the report on page 42, and you'll see that it says they were fairly stated. So this is another, a good report. No state comments, no state findings. And then you have to insert the page that says none. Don't know why. Also included is page 44. This is your internal controls. While we're here, we look at internal controls. We don't give an opinion on internal controls, but we use it to determine risks assessment and determine areas of the audit. If we come across anything while we're looking at internal controls, we will bring it to your attention in this report. And you can see that it says we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control. Lastly, we do federal program audit. This means that your federal expenditures exceed $750,000. So under the uniform guidance, we are required to do what they call a single audit, and we give an opinion on that and also note any deficiencies that we come across. And you'll see on page 47, we did not identify any deficiencies in the federal program audit as well. So another good report. Page 48 actually summarizes all of the federal information. So you'll see that at the top of the page, in the middle page, it says unmodified. This is considered a clean audit report, or exactly what you want to see on the federal program side of things. And then no all the way down. And then you can see the bottom red box says that our audit this year, our major program was the child nutrition cluster. So we tested food service this year as a major program. And then at the very bottom, it says audit qualified as a low-risk auditee. That's marked no. The reason it's marked no is because you have cash basis financial statements, and you cannot qualify as a low-risk auditee under uniform guidance. 99 percent of the schools in the state of Missouri are cash basis, so they cannot qualify under the uniform guidance. They didn't put in except for in the wording when they wrote it. And then page 48 shows the no comments, no findings on the federal program side of things. Any questions on the actual financial statements before we switch over to the other report?
Yes. So back on, it looks like page 12-ish, so the Schedule of Expenditures Paid by Object. I know you said 77 percent from salaries and benefits is kind of what you're seeing, but it looks like we've seen a, I don't know, it's a relative, but it's a three-point decline versus where we've been historically.
The reason it went down this year to 77 is because of an uptick in architect fees-
Okay.
-which are included in the capital outlay.
Gotcha.
So that's why your capital outlay actually went up to 3 percent. I would expect that to bump back up next year.
Sure. Okay, good.
Any other questions? So if you remember, last year we had the reports administration as well as the required communications. Those two reports have been combined into one report, just the required communications this year. This is where we report if we have any journal entries or if we came across anything while we're doing our audit, or if we had any disagreements with management. I'm happy to announce we didn't have disagreements with management. It's always a pleasure coming here. We also did not have any journal entries, so we didn't have any audit adjustments. Cindy does a fantastic job. Her entire team does a great job. So I'd even tell you that if she wasn't sitting here. We did have two minor recommendations, the first one being homebound. We test homebound students to see if their instruction meets the five-hour requirement. If it doesn't meet the five-hour requirement, you should report the actual hours they receive. And on the students we tested, we had some variances on whether they were getting their five hours and if they were getting reported accurately. So just a couple of the things there. We need to do some training maybe at the building levels on who's inputting the attendance on the homebound side. And then the last one is the, my go-to with every district this year, basically. With districts going to the GoFundMes and the Donors Choice and the things like that, all of my districts are going to it, and I'm asking all my districts, is everybody following their normal policies and procedures? And what I'm coming across is districts have them, but they're not filling out the application or going through the entire fundraising policy that you have. So this recommendation is that teachers and staff go through the full, normal application process so the district's aware of the fundraiser occurring. Questions for me? I know that was a brief overview.
Any questions of Brian?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to early notification incentive program.
So with that in mind, looking ahead to the spring semester, this is something we have done. We need action for the audit. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Let's back up.
I move the board adopt the 2018-19 annual audit.
Second. Discussion, roll call.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now.
Now the early-
I gave early notification about the early notification.
With that said, this is, we've done the last several years, just to assist us in getting a head start on our hiring season. As you all know, the spring is incredibly busy. So we've made this a point to bring forward to you each year to continue this effort as we try to hire the best people and hire them early. So incentivizing employees to notify us early if they're separating with the district, which typically is either in the form of retirement, or some that might be aware already, or kind of a pending change that they're facing. What would you want to add to this item, Dr. Boglar?
Yeah, thank you. Just that the early notification is not to incentivize anyone to depart from the district. It's just for those who can give us early notification, that they go ahead and pull that trigger. It allows us to post positions and go after those vacancies as early in the hiring season as possible. This year, the numbers were down in terms of just a quantity over the last couple of years. In my board report, there's a graph that shows that trend line. But we were also down total retirements, so it did incentivize early notification for vast majority of those people who did know that they were going to be departing. Ideally, you're not focused so much on an increase in the number count, you're just focused on a higher number with, in relation to everybody who is retiring. If you have 22 people who are notifying you early out of 86 that are retiring, it's not as effective. But that 22 was out of a number that was just a few above that that notified after that fact. And those that did notify after the fact truly hadn't made up their mind and weren't in a position to speed along that decision.
So must they be eligible to retire?
Yeah, last year we made the decision by going to 2.5 percent of the base salary to a cap of 2,500, that it would be for people who know they're retiring, as opposed to just anyone employed in the district that knows early enough that they're departing.
And then, does that, how does that impact their PSRS?
You know, that's a great question. I'll defer to the CFO. I mean, it's a payment at the end, and it's not paid, it's paid as a severance, right?
As a severance payment to retirement is not? Not in, okay. I just wanted to double check, because I know several years ago, that was also true.
Yeah.
So, okay, thanks.
And we felt this has helped us be advantageous in the marketplace, right? As we look for fill-
Yeah. The, and we get, sorry about that. We get this in January, we get the new staffing report, but you'll see in that, and historically year-over-year, the bubble of strongest talent that performs highest on our kind of national norm-referenced evaluator of teacher talent, classroom teacher talent, that that highest quality candidate is available to us in the months of February, March, and April. And it's front-loaded. We do start getting after candidates in January, so you get a head start on that talent pool at the earliest stage. For positions that typically have a lot of candidates, it's probably not as crucial. But we do have some hard-to-fill positions that if we're not getting after those spots early as possible, then we do miss out on that talent.
Additional questions regarding the ENET program?
If there aren't any, we're ready for a motion.
I move the board approve the 2019-2020 Early Notification Incentive Program.
Second.
Discussion.
Nice catch.
It's incentive.
Roll call, please.
David?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Kim Marie?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Board Candidate Workshop.
As we prepare for the month of December, a couple items to make you aware of regarding board service. We do have a Board Candidate Workshop that will be scheduled for December 10 at 5:30 p.m. And for those that are watching or interested in board candidacy and service to Liberty Public Schools, this is an opportunity to better understand what board service looks like, in hearing directly from officers, past board members, as well as Ms. Cochran and myself, and kind of the interrelation between the board and superintendent and working with the district. So be mindful of that coming up on December 10 at 5:30 p.m. here at the District Administration Center. Second item we wanted to make you aware of for the candidate filing window, Board Candidate Filing Window is odd this year, in that it actually opens on Christmas Eve. It opens December 24 at 8 a.m., and that candidate filing-
It is not nice.
That candidate filing window will remain open through January 21 in the 2020 year and close at 5 p.m. And we will post hours of operation in terms of the district and how often people can come in and access candidate filing. We do have three incumbents that will be up for election, that being Ms. Graham, Ms. Reed, as well as Mr. Byrd. On the morning of December 24, we wanted to clarify, we will not be open at the District Administration Center all day long, but we will be here to open candidate filing. And in working with other districts and identifying what they're going to be doing on that particular day tied to candidacy, we've decided administratively that our offices will be open from 8 to 10 to allow those interested in filing for candidacy to be present and fill out the appropriate paperwork. So again, that window will remain open from December 24 at 8 a.m., and then close of filing will be January 21 at 5 p.m. Anything to add, Ms. Cochran?
I think we need to clarify that we do not pick this December 24 date.
That is correct.
That's a statutory requirement. Every six years that happens.
Be sure and mark your calendar if that's something you're interested in doing, so. That's it on that item.
We go to 8.01, upcoming meetings. There's a list there of our meetings, the next one being the study session on December 3 at 7 a.m. And any comments or questions on the meetings?
There's a lot of them.
There are. And then we go to board remarks. And I would like to thank Liberty North Stuko, who fed us before our meeting tonight. Appreciate that. And I see lots of members out there that stuck around for the meeting. Appreciate that as well. And some that look like they came straight from swim. A little chlorine in the eyes, still a little bit over there. But thank you very much. Any other board remarks?
I would just like to, again, say thank you to Cindy and her team for all of the work on the audit. I know that it is a lot of work that has to be done to make that happen, and it's nice to hear the auditor say that it's always a good place to be doing their work. So thank you for that. And then just a second thing is, I had an occasion to interact with a school nurse today, and it occurred to me that as much as school nurses often are taking care of tummies that hurt and a fever, that sometimes they're faced with difficult choices. And thank you for that.
Taking care of the kids.
Taking care of kids in difficult situations and doing it well every day. Thank you.
I know Dr. Heidi brought it up with Veterans Day celebrations we have. I think it's, shouldn't be unique to our district, but I think it is the amount of effort that our buildings go through to recognize our veterans and to get them engaged in the classroom. And it gets a great opportunity for students to learn and show their appreciation, so thanks for all of that.
And the Veterans Day breakfast with the nice little change of program was very nice, very nice. Heard lots of positive comments from the vets who were there. They really enjoyed it. So thanks to Dallas and his team who put that together.
All right. Last remark, Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Enjoy the nice, long break next week. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
You would?[1771.21]